If we called the roll?
Yes. Councillor Kayser?
Present.
Councillor Anderson?
Also.
Councillor Nenke?
Here.
Councillor Leong? Absent. Councillor Osik?
Here.
Councillor Hoy?
Here.
Councillor Cook?
She is here.
She was here. She is here. Uh, she's here. Uh, Councillor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Bennett?
Here.
And then also some members of the Sustainable Services Revenue Task Force we have present. We have present Mike Erdman?
Here.
Teresa Haskins?
Here.
Raquel Moore-Green?
Here.
Kasia Quillanin?
Here.
Ray Quisenberry?
Here.
Dan Willard?
Here.
Thank you.
Very good. I join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We don't have any, uh, we don't have any additions or deletions, so we'll just move forward and I'll turn it over briefly to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. Before I make a few opening comments regarding the issue and some background, I'd like Kelly Jacobs to, uh, for the council and task force's benefit and for the public's benefit to do a quick walkthrough of the material that's available this evening.
Thank you, City Manager Powers, and welcome, everyone. The packet this evening, I guess if, if the size of the packet is indicative of the importance of the issue, then we've got good alignment here. It's an important issue and it's a good-sized packet for a work session. The items in your packet include a staff report from the city manager, which is kind of an overview of the issue. So it provides that context for the discussion that we'll have this evening. Then there is the Sustainable Services Revenue Task Force report. And this report was developed after multiple meetings with the task force and then a work group, a small work group of the task force members met additionally to put together this report. And the report very definitely reflects their, their recommendation and includes the items that they wanted to have as attachments to their recommendation. Behind that report and the attachments, and those attachments actually go to, golly, I think it's page 52, is the end of the, the attachments to the Sustainable Services Revenue Task Force report, the recommendation report. The, the next items are provided as context, as additional context. All of these items are included with the work session agenda packet online. There is also a Sustainable Services Work Group website, or webpage on the city's website. And those items include the task force charter, its membership. There is on page 59, there's actually a matrix of all of the options of, of revenue that were researched by staff and presented to the task force. And this handout actually includes the ranking from the task force. The task force performed a survey and did some ranking of all 13 of the options that were presented by staff. This handout provides that ranking. And then behind, behind that, um, that sheet, beginning on page 61, are the, the white papers that staff developed. You'll see a few of these white papers associated with the Sustainable Services Revenue Task Force Recommendation Report, but the, the remainder are included at the back of this packet so that you have an idea of what was researched by staff and what the, the Revenue Task Force had the opportunity to review. And also included in the packet at the very end are the presentations from this evening, including staff talking points. So it's not just the slides, it's the talking points, so you don't have to take notes if you're of a mind to do that. And these will be also posted, so that they're available online. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. When adopting the current year budget almost a year ago, city council realized the need for a robust discussion of revenue options and created the Sustainable Services Revenue Task Force. That vital step is why we're here this evening. Meeting on income tax filing day is a coincidence. Why additional revenue? The city is spending more each year than revenues received for police, fire, library, parks, neighborhood services, and other services in the city's general fund. This gap between revenues and expenditures is projected to grow. The city's funding is like dozens of buckets. Revenue is the water coming in, services is the water going out. Laws and policies limit the uses of the water and how much water can go into a bucket. Most of the city's buckets are in good shape. Others, most notably the general fund, are not in good fiscal shape. Without changes to the services we provide or to revenues, by July 1st, 2021, the city will be unable to continue doing all that we do. The city won't be able to continue to do what we do at current service levels. These would be big impacts on the community. How did we get here? The city has stepped in where the community has asked. For example, through the 2017 Salem strategic plan, residents looked to the city to do more to provide affordable housing and serve the homeless. This valuable work has been traditionally outside the city's core responsibility. We've restored services. The city made big, difficult changes in 2009 to balance the budget when the drop in revenue, with the drop in revenues from the recession. It made further changes in 2013. Closed fire stations, reduced library hours, reduced recreation services. Since that time, we've reopened fire stations and have continued to make improvements to services the community expects and values. Another contributor is the city as a service organization. For Salem, that means employees. Our costs of services are increasing. The last, property taxes. Property taxes are the largest source of revenue for the city's general fund. Measures approved over 20 years ago caused current valuation inequities, caps, permanent rates, and growth limits. Cost increases and service demands outpace property tax revenues. What have we done in response, in addition to creating the task force? We have fine-tuned and reduced costs where possible. We've been using technology in new ways and changing the ways we provide services. Using more energy-efficient products, charging for services that make sense, and engaging volunteers and foundations to support community services. These actions will continue. They are not enough. Efficiencies and volunteers will not solve our fiscal challenge. The city has been using one-time revenues to fund recurring expenditures, an unsustainable way to provide services needed and expected by the community. On behalf of the city organization, and many of them of the department heads are here this evening, my thanks to the task force and city council for the willingness to consider this vital policy question of sufficient revenues to provide fiscally sustainable services. Thank you. Staff looks forward to assisting with your discussion this evening. And if there are any, any questions as we're going through this evening, please don't hesitate to call on, on Kelly or, or me or, or one of the analysts to help answer questions regarding the revenue recommendations.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Manager. I really appreciate you not bringing your banjo and breaking into stanzas if there's a hole in my bucket. But we'll move forward. I first want to thank the members of the task force, not all of whom will be speaking or hopefully some who are in the audience and would like to get up, will, will do so under public comment. But particularly, I want to thank Dan Wellert, Ray Quisenberry, Kasia Quillanin, Monica Pacheco, Dana Young, Teresa Haskins, Jesse Gasper, Mike Erdman, Antonio Decker, and Brittany Davidson-Crookshank, as well as Raquel Moore-Green. And then Councillors McCoyd, Osik, and myself were on that task force as well. I'm looking forward to hearing the council's reaction to what we found. I think you'll get a really good understanding of some of the challenges we faced under a variety of the issues in front of us. I'm going to apologize in advance. I have a, a speaking engagement in front of students and parents at South Salem High School, so I'm going to have to leave just before 7:00. Councillor Hoy, as council president, will take over, particularly as you start to vote on advancing these toward the city councils. So I hope you'll follow carefully and begin to arrive at some decisions. The Revenue Task Force was charged with addressing the issue the city manager describes. This imbalance between the cost of services in the general fund and the revenues available is a dire one. You've seen the headlines about $7 million in shortfalls. We need to start closing that gap, and there are really two ways to do it. Cut or add revenue. In exploring these new additional revenue sources and forming this, its recommendation, the task force has fulfilled the direction of the city council and taken an important step toward achieving a sustainable services goal that was identified in our strategic plan. This evening, you'll hear from members of the task force and from city staff regarding the three recommended options. During a series of meetings last fall, the task force narrowed a list of 13 revenue options researched by staff and included in your binders to a prioritize selection of seven options and then narrowed that list to three. Two of the revenue options can be applied to the structural imbalance in the general fund. The third option, a local gas tax, would be dedicated to the operation and maintenance of the street and sidewalk system in Salem and will not be recommended by the city manager for you to move forward at this time. It's considering the two options for the general fund, the task force emphasized sources that could be, could generate six to eight million dollars per year, either individually or in combination. Many of the revenue sources researched by staff and, and a lower priority for the task force had much less revenue potential. Closing the gap in the general fund would have required packaging, packaging multiple more options to find that solution. Raquel, do you want to go ahead?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you again for the opportunity to, to serve. It's quite a privilege. Additionally, the discussion of the task force emphasized equitable application of the operating fee and consideration of the capacity of lower-income residents to afford either option. Neither of the general fund options are required to be referred to the voters. However, the task force, task force recommends this step as well. Mayor?
Another important consideration for the council is the timing involved with implementing a new revenue option. Your binder includes a table describing the timing, while a municipal payroll tax may be more common in other, whoops.
Whoops.
I'm just taking your right to page three, uh, for referral to voters and estimation from staff regarding the timing for implementation following referral process for council enactments.
Additionally, the city manager has recommended to assist our residents with understanding the fiscal challenges in the general fund and the revenue options available to address those issues, that the gas tax option should be reviewed this evening, but any action delayed. The city manager also recommends by focusing our current efforts and public attention on sustaining the services supported by the general fund.
This work session is structured to review the three options individually, and each option will be introduced by a member of the task force, followed by a brief presentation from staff. So that's where we're going to begin, and we'll begin with Teresa Haskins, who will talk to us about one of the options. Go ahead, Teresa.
Thank you. And, and as Raquel said, I appreciate the invitation to have participated in the process, and, and I'm glad I had that opportunity to be here with you tonight as well. So, the operating fee, our first revenue recommendation. An operating fee is a fairly common revenue option in Oregon, and currently there are about city, 50 cities in Oregon that have an operating fee included with customer utility bills, like your water sewer bill, not your PGE bill where I work. Thank you. Of the 50 cities, many have two or more operating fees to fund different needs. Prior to recommending this option, the task force explored multiple allocation methodologies using Salem's current utility bill classifications. These same classifications are used to administer the city's streetlight fee. A charging method such as this that is separate from property tax or property value retains the distinction of a fee as opposed to a property tax. So in its discussion of the allocation methods, our task force focused on the equitable distribution for single-family and multifamily dwellings and for commercial, industrial, and public buildings. So staff will display and describe a few of the allocation methodologies this evening. Each example presented to you will be sufficient to generate $8 million of additional revenue for the city's general fund services. The task force members present at the final, or present, excuse me, at the final meeting voted unanimously in support of this option. So Dave Lacy, I think a member of our city staff, will provide a brief presentation on the city operating fee. And following David's presentation and responses to questions, Dan will introduce the next revenue option. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett and Member Haskins, for that great introduction. In fact, I think I could make my presentation more brief because you covered the material so well. So, David Lacy from Finance. And the first option we want to present tonight is one that the city council is familiar with. It's a city operating fee, and you may be aware of the, the streetlight fee that we currently charge on our city utility bill. So, as was mentioned, these fees are very common. They can be collected as a separate line item on a city, a utility bill or a city services bill, depending on what the community chooses for that. Those fees would only apply to inside-city customers, since the Salem utility also has outside-city customers. And again, we, we have a current fee for the streetlight fee that starts out with a rate of about $2.80 for residential customers. So this map gives you a visual representation of how many cities within Oregon do currently have a city operating fee. And the table also gives some information on what the fees look like and some of the dollars as far as what is generated with those. As you can see from the table, Hillsborough has a resident fee of around $8.79, and the total budgeted revenue for that fee that they charge is about $3.1 million. You know, some other examples that we have, one of the highest fees is a city fee for West Lynn, which has about a $28 per month fee, and that covers road and park maintenance. And one of the lowest fees in the state is actually the city of Salem's rate at $2.80 for residential customers. As noted on the slide as well, the average residential fee for most cities is around $10. And our, our neighbor to the north, Kaiser, implemented two fees back in the last year, I believe, for a total of $8, but $4 for public service, or public safety, and then $4 for parks. And as was mentioned, we went through a numerous allocation methods with the, with the structure fee with the task force. We've wanted to try and simplify that to three main concepts for your presentation for tonight. The first slide represents a flat fee for all types of utility customers. So in this case, the rate of $15.30 applied to all utility customers would generate approximately $8.1 million. And it shows what that allocation would be like if that fee was just straight applied with each utility count. There are certain cities that do it this way, just basically have a flat fee. But some of the other things we did is we wanted to actually differentiate a little bit more within our utility customer classes, so that will be our next example. Yes, Councillor?
Thank you. The, the one thing I didn't understand in this material is when it, the multifamily per account. So I'm aware that some multifamily units are, there's one account?
Right.
For the, for the entire unit?
Correct.
And, or their entire complex. And sometimes it's, it's an individual account, maybe on, so are we saying like, say, a 400-unit apartment building would, if they pay one utility bill, they would pay $15.30, just like a person, a single-family dwelling would pay $15.30?
Sure. Under this methodology, that's exactly what we'd be saying. So we have about 1,800 multifamily accounts. So in those cases, when there's multiple units, so a master meter that goes to that, that complex would be paying that route under this first option here, under that methodology.
Thank you.
You bet. And the second methodology that was brought forward, at least that we'll present this evening, breaks out multifamily, so based, based on that question, Councillor Hoy as well, to say, we do collect information based on our wastewater rates of the number of dwelling units within certain properties. So within our current utility billing system at this point, we could allocate that fee based on the number of units. However, that bill would still go to that master meter in that case. But that would allocate about 23,951 units. And so what you see on this structure is it breaks it out into more of the utility classes, but you can see that that lowers that fee under this methodology to $7.80 for residential, and then also applying that same fee to those per-unit dwellings of $7.80. And as you go down the table, you can see, we keep that fairly steady at 780 until we get to the commercial, industrial, and the other classes, which we've applied a rate of $75 to get us to that approximately $8.1 million, again, dollar. And I guess as an example, just to do that in this case, it goes, it speaks to the example that you gave, is if it was a 100-unit complex, that monthly bill for that, that complex would be the $780 per month would be the way that would work, so.
Thank you. So are you aware of the 50 or so cities that do something like this? Are you aware, which method is used most commonly? Is it the first one or this one?
Um, it's probably more common to try and do some differentiation. So we do have some information that kind of breaks it out, but there's generally a, a residential-type fee and then also a higher fee for non-residential classes. But I think, kind of going back to our streetlight fee too, we actually break that out a little bit more so than we've seen in other communities, and this kind of gets us to that same mix of breaking it up a little bit as well. However, we've kept that fee fairly, fairly flat for those other classifications, just as an allocation method. Getting back to this, there's a, you know, millions of ways you could allocate this, but that's what we, what you normally see.
Thank you.
Yeah. Real, real quick, the, I'll use the first example where it would be $15.30 for the residential customers. Is that including the $2.80, or is, is the $2.80 separate? I mean? It would be a separate fee. So currently, the $2.80 on a residential bill applies to our streetlight fee, which is dedicated funding to that source to pay for the debt service and conversion costs for the streetlight program. So this would be an additional line on the utility bill in this case. Okay. So it would be this, this amount plus the $2.80? And the final chart we wanted to display this evening is actually based on some of the equity questions that, that were brought up by the task force. And so when we had our meeting in January, the subgroup that put together the recommendation to council wanted to talk about the multifamily fee. We put together a few different methodologies to charge a little bit less for multifamily, but what this, this hybrid is, is essentially another method to apply what the census data shows us, which is about 80% of a residential unit, and applying a fee to that based on that. And that's some of the methodologies that are similar to the way we would assess like parks, STCs, and things too, using that census data to come up with a number on that. So on this chart, you can see, it does, as you kind of squeeze the water balloon to the different categories to make up that same dollar, it does increase the residential fee to $8.50, but does drop that multifamily per-unit fee to $6.80 in this case, and keeping the methodology fairly similar for the rest of those. So that again generates about that 8.1, 8.2 million dollar number with that methodology.
I've got a question about just your methodology, I guess, between residential and multifamily. Are you, your customer classification, is that with utility counts? Are you based on zoning, or how is, how are you deriving?
These numbers.
The customer classification?
Customer classifications come from utility customers, so that's, that's how we, we break these out. The multifamily would be considered that classification within our utility billing. So for our water sewer and stormwater charges, that's how we have that allocation. We do collect because of the wastewater fees, how many units are in those multifamily. And so it is data that we have within our utility customer.
So if you're in an apartment building of, you know, 80 units, but each of the units pays for their own water? Is that a separate customer? Would they be considered residential in that case, or would they be multifamily?
They would be considered, I believe, multifamily in that, well, residential, I suppose, depends on what it is, but we do have the breakout of what those are, so we know, like, we have, you know, 908 duplexes, so depending on how that meter is, they would be receiving a charge, more than likely residential in that case. But if it was one meter, then we'd be breaking out those counts.
So it's really by meter, it sounds like then?
Or our count essentially.
Okay. So if you're like in a condominium and own that, but it's, you don't have a meter, it's a shared meter, or it's part of your dues or whatever?
Right.
Then that would be considered a multifamily as well?
Right.
Okay. Thanks.
When the streetlight fee was enacted, I know we had the same discussion as far as multi-residential and commercial. Was there any key tie for raising rent costs? And when the streetlight fee went in, I know there's a lot of other factors in place, but I know that concerns come up as far as equability, being equitable with this particular fee.
Sure. With the streetlight fee, we actually had a methodology, and I'll see if I have it in front of me here too, but we basically kind of broadbanded multifamily, so it was based on per unit, and I believe it's like one to four units, five to, I forget the number, but then there's 25 and more, so we have three different ranges that go on that. And it goes back to, as Councillor always talked about, a flat rate that goes to that complex. So from that standpoint, I think our highest streetlight fee is $18 for multifamily. So essentially, then you'd be allocating that over however many units that have it that are over 25, from a landlord perspective at that point. With this methodology, it does change how we're doing this because it's looking at the, you know, number of units in that. So as we, we talked about that bill being a little bit larger in the case of it being $780, that would be going to that customer, we're generating more revenue, which is why that fee is a little bit higher. But those are some of the methodologies that currently are not employed with the streetlight fee, but would be based on the task force recommendation at this point.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councillor Anderson?
Thank you. I was involved pretty heavily in the streetlight fee and also involved in the equity issue, and my concerns there were that, what I guess we're calling here, commercial, industrial, institutional, public building, we're paying $13.50 per month, and the individual homeowner was paying $2.80. And my view of that was that that was not equitable in terms of the use that the commercial, industrial, institutional, and public buildings got from the streetlights as opposed to the use residential user gets to it. And so I'm, I am pleased when you look at the, the fees because there's, there's quite a jump between residential and commercial, industrial, institutional, you know, from under either one, from either 780 or 850 to $75. So we're almost going 10 times the cost as opposed to about four times the cost. So I think that's very good. Leads me to two questions. The first one is a consideration of the streetlight fee itself and looking at that in light of equities that you obviously, the task force obviously looked at here. The second concern or issue I have is if you, the last chart, I think it's the chart that's up there now, you were saying this was in response to equity issues, and what I see from that is residential, multifamily, irrigation, small, commercial, they all got a pop. And commercial, industrial, institutional, public building are paying the same rate under either theory. So I'm a little curious about the equities that are in that issue, if you're actually looking at equities. We increased the lower end of the, of the fee scale, but did not increase the upper end of the fee scale. So I'd like a response to actually both those things, please.
So with the streetlight fee, again, that, the methodology's been set by the council at this point, you know, based on resolution. If that is something the council wants to revisit, you know, that, that is an option. I do want to stress, we do have debt service on the streetlight fee, things like that for our conversion costs, so.
Excuse me, David. I guess my question was, was this discussed by the task force at all?
This particular methodology?
The street, the streetlight fee, was that discussed by the task force at all?
We had some brief discussion on the streetlight fee, but again, we're focused on.
Nothing that led to, yeah, okay.
Right. And again, that's a council decision at this point, so.
Second, you've got another question.
So the second, second question was just regarding the fee. And, and again, I think I'd want to stress that we could come up with a lot of different allocation methods. Really, what we were trying to drive in these two different charts, as you mentioned, is the primary drivers of any fee based just on our population is we're a highly residential community. So residential and multifamily are always going to pay the larger share, which is why we've put those, those percentages as well on there. We can, you know, look at a methodology where we would increase those other commercial classes and institutional. However, you know, depending on what that fee is, they don't generate the same percentage of the revenue. So those are some of the things that we did talk about in the task force, I believe. There are also some comments on commercial rates and, and just the, the percentage that businesses would be paying as well. So this is one methodology that we came up with. Again, basically going to the city council to whether or not they would want to do a different methodology on this. But, you know, again, if we increase those other classes that, from the $75, it takes, it takes a lot more on those particular classes to generate revenue and lower the other fees.
I understand that.
Sure.
You know, I'm still concerned about the equity on the individual person. Thanks.
You bet.
Since we're discussing revenue, I'm going to assume that public building does not include any public buildings, that the city of Salem may be operating or leasing as well. Would that be a correct statement?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay.
Jim?
Yeah, I, what is the definition of the difference between small, commercial, and commercial?
So it was a methodology that we came up with with the streetlight fee to try and look at, you know, if there were small businesses, what would those look like? And so we used our stormwater data to get an idea of size. And so that was what small, commercial would be. And I believe that was 3,000 equivalent dwelling units is the way we've actually structured that. So it would be kind of a similar to a residential home. So as we looked at that methodology with streetlights, that's one of the distinctions we do have within the utility billing system to be able to make some of those decisions on that.
So I know the issue of equity has been brought up a couple of times, but it would seem to me with our budget issues, we should also have an eye or expand that definition of equity to include really diversifying our sources of revenue when they're coming in so that we can have a broader source of revenue. And I'm really glad that the task force looked at this. In looking at the commercial, industrial, institutional, public building, .1%, less than 1% in some cases, but we're still including that to help make sure that it's a diverse source. Is that right?
Correct.
Can you explain some reasoning behind that?
Well, again, it's going back to how we would allocate it. So these are utility accounts that do exist. So public buildings, things like that, includes schools, you know, the state, things like that as well. So they're included in there. And again, you know, it goes back to, in some of those that have a very small count, you know, that fee could be much larger, however, it doesn't generate a whole lot more revenue. So again, when we would look at a methodology, and again, I want to stress, these are examples that we do. There's definitely a lot of different methodologies that could be employed. That's one of the main, main concerns, as we've talked about. You know, if, even if those rates are a whole lot higher, it may be what what the council would ultimately decide was, would be the fee structure. However, it doesn't necessarily reduce the other classifications by a very measurable rate, just simply because there aren't as many of those classes, so.
Thank you. So just to follow up on the distinction between small, commercial, and commercial, I'm remembering back to our water rate discussion last year and the business that's out on Kubler that came and talked about their usage of water and sewer and how it ended up being not a not a, not a great way to calculate their fees because of the nature of their business. So I'm wondering, the difference between small, commercial, and commercial, I mean, we're basing that on water or sewer usage?
No, we're actually, yeah, so their water and sewer usage would be based on the fee structure that we have set up for that classification, so the commercial classification. We're, we're literally just using a piece that we have within the utility data for the stormwater EDU portion of it, which would, if from that case be, would apply to their bill from that point. But the streetlight fee allocation was just simply to try and apply a rate that was similar to residential to those smaller, commercial properties.
Okay, so what I'm trying to get at is that, I want to make sure that we're not overburdening the small businesses and underburdening larger businesses based, you know, based on, maybe, I'm thinking of maybe a golf course compared to, like, that frozen food storage place that I think probably generates quite a bit of revenue, but yet has a really small number of people, that sort of thing. So it may not be the, I'm just wondering if that's really the greatest way to distinguish.
Sure. And I think it's, it's difficult because as we're trying to look at different methodologies, it goes back to, again, what data do we have?
Right.
To be able to put those together. But this was one thing, as, as the council talked through the, the streetlight fee, to try and get it, get at least that, that portion of it for small, commercial to be similar to the residential, and that's, that was where that data came from.
Okay, thank you.
Question, because we're kind of a follow-up, Councilor Hoy's. And that is, and I guess I don't know, but does, does this fee need to be a fixed amount? Could it be a percentage? Is that, would it still be a fee if it was, for example, a percentage of your utility bill? As an example, because I think it kind of gets at that idea that you're talking about, Councilor Hoy, with somebody who uses very little water or sewer or wastewater, could, theoretically, they're using those services less than somebody who's using a bunch of that stuff and paying less?
Well, I think it gets down to a nexus issue because you can't necessarily equate water usage to say, you know, let's just use a general fund service, but, you know, police, you know, response or fire response or parks usage based on that.
Well, I was just curious, I guess, does it have to be a fixed fee?
From the utility billing system, it would, it would, it would work best as a fixed fee by customer class.
Okay, but does it have to be? I'm trying, I'm trying to understand the legality here. Does it have to be actually a fixed amount, dollar amount, or does it have to, could it be a percentage of something?
Well, I think, oh, I'm sorry.
I think the answer is no, it doesn't have to be a fixed fee. But I think technically, we'd have to talk to the folks who run the programming to figure out if we could do that. Legally, no.
Yeah, and that's, thank you. That's what I was trying to get at, is what, what are our sideboards here that we could play around with a bit? Because as we are exploring issues of equity and all of that, so I was just curious.
Yeah, and I mean, it really comes down to what limitations and what we can do with our current utility system, or if council directs that to be a different type of methodology, the development that we'd have to do to go ahead and get to a different way of allocating fees. Sally?
Does a fixed fee make a little more sense as far as predictability for the customers as though, just, and also if this is not based on usage, but based on general fund, to be able to look at, was that discussed in the, in the sustainable services group?
Yeah, it was, and it's, it's probably on my last slide here, sorry, but what they did discuss again was essentially looking at a general services fee versus a specific one. And cities do do different things. Some cities have public safety fees, some, some have transportation fees. The task force recommendation as far as this would be to consider this a general purpose fee, but that, that choice can still be made. Again, this is a recommendation.
Yeah, just to clarify, I'm not advocating for that, at least right now. I just want to know what's possible and make sure we have all that information on the table.
Right, great. Why don't we go to, if you don't mind, we'll go to the next one. This will be the kinds of things that'll enrich our discussion as a council if this moves into the council's purview, if you decide to move it forward to the council for further work. I mean, these are, these are good questions.
Can I ask one quick follow-up?
Yeah.
Thank you. Of the 50 or so cities in Oregon that have implemented this type of fee, do you know what percentage just, the city councils just did that and how many referred it out for a vote?
Yeah, and I believe we have the information in the packet, but the majority of fees were actually implemented by, by city council. We had a few different examples. Gresham was an example that went out for a local option levy. Voters did not approve that, so the city council implemented that fee, went out again as a local option levy. So that's one example, but, but the, but the majority of cities go ahead and use, implement this.
How many members of the council are still there after they put it out for vote and then they changed their mind?
But the majority of city operating fees have been approved by council action, and that was the way the streetlight fee was as well in this case.
Okay.
All right.
We'll go then. Dan, do you want to talk about payroll tax?
Sure, I'd love to, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for the invitation to participate in this process. It has been, been a joy to serve. Well, municipal payroll tax, maybe more common in other parts of the country. For me, I grew up in the Midwest, and this was a pretty common thing back there. Only three cities in Oregon, Canby, Sandy, and Wilsonville, currently employ this type of tax as a revenue source. In each case, it is used to operate a transit system. In addition, two transit districts, Lang County Mass Transit and TriMet Transit, have payroll taxes as a revenue source collected as a percentage of gross payroll from employers paying taxes earned within each district. The state of Oregon recently added a transportation-focused employee-paid tax. The city of Eugene is currently exploring both an employee-paid and an employer-paid payroll tax. The task force, through a very narrow majority of seven to six, is recommending employee-paid tax. In making this recommendation, the task force reviewed the equity of a tax applied across the community. By assigning the tax to all sectors, both public and private, and having it be employee-paid, it extends the tax obligation to individuals, individuals who commute to Salem for work. In its deliberation of this option, task force members questioned the impact on low-income residents and how the tax could be imposed across different employment scenarios. Additionally, discussion focused on administration of the tax, with staff noting that it was unlikely it would be collected by the city. The state of Oregon is already in the business of collecting income taxes. Having the state manage a payroll tax collection for Salem would likely require a significant initial setup fee and ongoing administration costs to be factored into the tax rate. The rate example presented by staff this evening is intended to generate approximately $8 million annually. Kelly Bleichschmidt?
Got it.
A member of city staff will provide a brief presentation on an employee, employee-paid payroll tax. Following Kelly's presentation in response to questions, Kelly Jacobs will provide some context for the $8 million target for the two general fund revenue sources. Then the committee will have the opportunity to continue its discussion about the task force recommendations and any other revenue questions.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you, Dan. Good evening, Mayor Bennett, councilors, and task force members. My name is Kelly Bleichschmidt, and I am administrative analyst in the finance division of the city manager's office. I'll be giving a presentation on the task force recommended option of an employee-paid payroll tax. A payroll tax is a ta, tax paid based on a percentage of wages earned within a taxing jurisdiction. These taxes can either be paid by the employer or by the employee through wage deduction. As Dan noted in his introduction, there are six taxing jurisdictions using a payroll tax as a funding mechanism for transit operations and/or capital. The task force ultimately recommended an employee-paid payroll tax. This table was reviewed by the task force during their second meeting and demonstrates Salem MSA wages for 2017 as reported by the Oregon Employment Department. The figure, just above $7.5 billion, includes all industries and sectors, both public and private. The Salem MSA includes the whole of Polk and Marion Counties. Using this figure, a range of potential payroll percentages, payroll tax percentages, were applied to demonstrate the amount of revenue that a payroll tax could generate. While the task force was meeting this fall, the state of Oregon had just finished its first quarter of collections for the statewide transit payroll tax. This payroll tax is collected at a rate of 1/10 of 1% and is paid by the employee through a wage deduction. In order to obtain a more specific Salem city number, finance staff reached out to the Department of Revenue to see if the taxes paid for the statewide tax could be isolated in such a way to provide a Salem's earning estimate that was more accurate than the MSA The table before you is the result of that data request. Looking at the table, for the first quarter of this fiscal year between July 1st, 2018, and September 30th, 2018, there were just under $875 million in wages earned in Salem, while a second quarter from October 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2018, had just over $1 billion. There are a couple of things to note with this data set. First, the Department of Revenue filtered wages from businesses that reported their business address as being in Salem. This does not mean that the business is actually located within the city boundary. For example, there are businesses that run along Lancaster, which can be in or outside of city limits, depending on the location. Staff have been told by the Department of Revenue that a more exact number would be easier to estimate with a list of business EINs to cross-reference with data collection. The city currently does not have a business registration program to supply this information. A second thing to note about this data is the hire number reported in the second quarter. The second quarter includes the holiday season and hiring and end-of-the-year payouts, which produce wages higher during this time of the year. However, since these wage trends would be cyclical annually, a slight bump in a second-quarter collections could be expected year after year. There are no known revenue restrictions with this source. It is possible for revenue amounts to be restricted by any exemptions that the council chooses to impose. Some possible restrictions could be income-based or industry-based. Of the current payroll taxes collected in the state, common exemptions include federal credit unions, public school districts, and 501(c)(3). This revenue source can be implemented by council ordinance or voter referral. Another consideration for a payroll tax would be its collection method. Currently, the Department of Revenue administers a payroll, administers the payroll tax programs for both Lang County Transit and TriMet. This includes the collection enforcement and disbursement of the payroll taxes back to the jurisdiction. The city of Eugene is also in discussion with the Department of Revenue to collect and administer a payroll tax on its behalf. Meanwhile, the cities of Sandy, Canby, and Wilsonville self-administer. A key difference between these cities and Salem is each, each has a business registration program, providing information about businesses within the city boundaries and ones that are active. This data allows for cross-referencing between the payroll taxes received and established businesses in those cities. Staff estimates at minimum it would take 18 months to establish a payroll tax program. Influencing factors would depend on how the tax was adopted, either via voter referral or council adoption ordinance, and the entity administering it, either the Department of Revenue or the city. This concludes my presentation.
Very good. Any questions?
So, thank you.
Yeah.
My question is, so it sounds like if the business is headquartered in Salem, then the employees who work there would pay the payroll tax. What if those employees don't work in Salem, but the business is headquartered in Salem?
So typically, with the way a payroll tax works, it's wages earned within the jurisdiction. So if they're conducting work within the jurisdiction, those hours would be assigned to payroll tax.
Okay, so if you had a business that was headquartered here, but somebody worked from home in Portland, they wouldn't, that, that person, that employee would not pay that tax?
Right, and it would also depend on how it was structured.
That's why I'm asking the question, because I'm wondering, is it based on the employer location or the employee location?
It's paid by the employee and where they're doing their work.
Okay, so if they're telecommuting from someplace else, but the business is headquartered in Salem, then they will not pay this payroll tax?
Not the way that it's currently, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I'd like to talk about collection for a bit. If the state collects it, we're paying the state something to do that.
Correct.
And it sounds like if there was, in fact, a business registration, so you as the city staff knew the location and the type of businesses, we would do the collecting. The city would?
It would be at, you're, an option, yes.
And would that be less expensive for the city than going out to the state?
I think it would depend on the amount of staff. I would have to defer to Budget Officer Jacobs, probably, or David.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's all right. I have another question, I don't know if.
Oh, no, I'll stand right here.
She can stand up. So David Lys from Finance again. So we do collect city revenues, obviously, through Finance at this point, through Accounts Receivable System. If we had a, a, a good way of verifying what that information should be, then we could probably generate a mechanism to do that. I'm not sure what that would really require from staffing, and it would really depend on whether that would be monthly invoicing, quarterly, things like that. We do have the Department of Revenue collecting certain fees for the city at this point, including our marijuana tax, things like that. But those are functions that are limited by banking regulations, which is the main reason we would otherwise do that. I think that's the difficult part with the discussions with the DOR at this point is, you know, while they're intrigued about what we're, we're talking about, again, it would be them deciding what needed to be ramped up and then, then an allocation that would have to, that we'd have to factor into what those, those tax rates would be to make sure we generated the right amount of revenue.
I suppose the difference in some of those is the marijuana tax, it's a statewide thing, so it's more appropriate for the state to be collecting. Would this be something, if the city did it, that could be added to the utility bills once you guys figured out some sort of program or not?
A payroll tax, probably not. I mean, we're, we're talking about something a little bit differently from a billing standpoint. But if we had the data to know who to bill and what that data would look like, I think the, the, the more easy portion of this is the state of Oregon's used to collecting income taxes, so there's already a mechanism to do that.
Sure, okay, thank you.
You bet.
This question is probably directed more to the members of the task force, and Mr. Weller indicated that, that it was a narrow seven to six. So I'd be interested in if anybody's here from the sixth side who could talk about what their concerns were about it after the task force spent a lot of time, which we all appreciate from you folks. This is not an easy subject, and I'm sure it was very hard to do it. So it looks like somebody's going to the microphone over there.
Well, I remember I did not support this one, but my con- But my concerns, and this is my, as I personally looked at it, were the collection. If you're not employed in the city boundaries, or you're, there are a lot of businesses who, like PGE, we have employees that are all over the service area and driving in and out of, say, the city of Salem and going to do work in Kaiser in the very same day, and the tracking of that time, or how that all gets allocated, just seemed problematic to me. And then I was comparing it at that point to the operating fee, which felt more manageable from a business perspective of helping, you know, our business or our employees cover it.
Was there any discussion in terms, now we're back to equity again, of the fact that why do the employees pay it as opposed to the employers and how that relates to the equity issue? I see the issues in here that, you know, people are coming in and using the city of Salem services, so maybe they should pay for something, at least they're using them during the work hours. Was there anybody on the committee who had some concerns about employer pay versus employee pay?
Hi, Tom. I voted for the employee pay, but I was still thinking about the employer pay. We talked about it. We didn't really spend much time with it, in all honesty, and I think it needed to be fleshed out a little bit more. So that was kind of my take on it.
Dan.
Counselor Anderson. Did a lot of work in the Detroit metro area, and, you know, when we're, for me personally, I voted for.
Which Detroit?
Detroit, Michigan. Some of the jurisdictions, also Flann area. And, you know, when, for me, it was a very small amount of my paycheck when we're talking a tenth or two tenths of a percent. It wasn't very substantial. So it was kind of a pain to, when I was working directly and managing the entire office, it was a bit of a pain to track, especially if you have employees working in all these different municipalities that have it. But it's more uncommon here in the West, but in the Midwest, it's very proven. There's a lot of places that have had it.
I have a further comment over here. I also was in favor of this employee tax, and having worked for the state for quite some time, we had that employee tax. You may notice that the state collects it, and we had that employee tax deducted from our paycheck, and nobody ever noticed. It was a very small amount. So I perceive this employee tax in the same way, analogously, to the workers' comp premiums that are deducted and paid, some by the employer and some by the employee. Very similar scheme as to what might be implemented here with an employee payroll tax. And as Mr. Weller points out, it ultimately is a very small amount of money overall. And it does collect money that we would not otherwise be collecting from a lot of people who do commute into Salem. Now, yes, there's probably some bookkeeping issues with people who, as Ms. Haskins points out, have employees, you know, in various other places, but that's not an insurmountable problem. But what it does do, like I said, is it does collect at least a small amount of money from people who don't pay property taxes here, who don't contribute in any way to the financial success of the city, but who still continue to use services that we provide as a city. So to me, that's a pretty good reason for saying that this is an option worth pursuing.
And I believe Mr. Atchison wants to speak.
Thank you, Dan Atchison, City Attorney. One difference between the employer-based tax versus the employee-based tax is that for the employer-based tax, there's specific state legislation that gives these taxing districts the authority to tax other governmental entities such as the state. We don't have that statutory authority to tax the state for an employer-based tax for the city. So it's another reason that the employee-based tax would have a broader reach and easier to administer.
Thank you, Mr. Edman.
Yeah, that follows up on the point I was going to make, and I think we had that discussion at the committee level, that that makes Salem perhaps a little unique compared to some of the other cities that do an employer-based payroll tax. Because so much of our payroll is state of Oregon employees, that led us back to the employee-paid payroll tax because the state would be exempt.
Counselor Cook.
So I just am curious if the task force reviewed the previous ballot that measure that did not pass in the area regarding, would you like to explain? No? Okay. Sorry, I just saw head shaking. So that was discussed, because I'm wondering what the plan would be to have this be successful, considering it was just such a recent measure that was not approved? And also, did you look at the name at all, or the possibility of reframing this as a separate name? Is there any history of that in the Midwest? People always call it an employee payroll tax, or does it go by another name?
For me, when it was coming out of my check, it was like a dollar and 12 cents, you know? It was just the city payroll tax. What measure specifically are you?
So, if you would like.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but are you referring to the chariots measure?
Yes.
Yes, the 2015, is this kind of, remember? We talked about this a little bit.
We talked about that, yeah.
Okay.
And if memory serves me, that was an employer payroll tax, not an employee payroll tax. If memory is serving.
So when the revenue task force discussed it, they saw the same issues as far as the state being the key employer, being exempt, these sort of issues, same kind of thing. Because looking at it from a voter standpoint, seeing, especially with the name and with the math, how sometimes that can be difficult, I understand that not a very large sum, having it be very compact, it can still be, I think it's important to get ahead of it and important to educate people where that service would be going. So wanting to double-check.
Agreed. Counselor Kizer.
Thanks. I think one of the issues I still see with this is the mechanics of how it would work. So I work for the state of Oregon. Our department is headquartered in Salem, but we have offices all over the state. Now, our payroll doesn't distinguish between where you work. Believe it or not, our state systems don't have that level of information. Some do, some don't. But I know for our department specifically, we're not able to say definitively somebody works in Salem as opposed to not working in Salem. So with the state of Oregon itself, I see some issues there as far as them trying to collect or even know who those people are. My guess is other businesses might be in the same boat. I would also just point out that the data here says public sector wages are 31% of the whole. So it's really private sector is actually the biggest employer in Salem.
Counselor Anderson.
I just have a technical question on both of the slides you showed us with the tables. Yeah, go to the first one, please. Yeah. Okay, so that shows a projection at point 0.2 up to point 1, but when you look at the other chart, it's showing point 2 up to point 4. How does that correlate, or should it correlate?
So the first chart, I was just showing what the task force had initially seen. So this is what, this is one of the charts that they initially saw. And so I kept the same, I didn't change anything. I kept the same numbers that they had seen. And then, once we had had the more Salem-specific data come in, is when I switched it. So that way, the percentages were more accurate to fit.
So you're trying to raise the same amount, and now you discover that there's more people in the first slide than there are on the second slide, so in order to raise the same amount, you have to pop up the percentage?
Correct.
Okay.
Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, I, my mind just went blank. Sorry, just give me a second. Oh, I guess a question for the legal counsel. Does the city of Salem actually have the authority to implement an employee tax, including the state of Oregon employees?
Yes, we're a home rule jurisdiction. We have the authority to do pretty much anything that's not prohibited by state law or the Constitution. So while we couldn't tax the employer, the state employer, we could tax the employee.
But could we convince the employer that they need to do the work necessary to get those numbers of employees in the city?
That is an interesting question. I don't know that that's been solved with any certainty, but it would require some cooperation by the state employers, yes.
So it seems to me that if this is one of the options that we're going to consider at some point in the future, this is an area that needs some more work. We need to find out some more details about how would this really work in terms of determining who is subject to this tax? So I think that might be something for staff to take a note of, that if we end up deciding to consider this further, we're probably going to want to know that before we make any sort of decision.
Along the same grounds, I'd be interested in if we have to go pop it up to point 2 up to point 4, how that would affect the average worker in the city in terms of what is being paid as opposed to point 0.1 to point 1. I mean, that seems like, obviously, it could be four times as much, and I don't know how much that would be.
I think we had the number for the average wage in the material, if I recall correctly, so maybe somebody's done the math.
I'd briefly comment on this, too. So in the materials, I'm not sure what page, but it was in one of the staff reports for November 28th.
Forty-eight.
And we, the slide showed the MSA number, so the one that we were talking about with Kelly was actually showing the whole Salem metropolitan statistical area, so the wages were much larger for that portion. We made an estimate with one of the task force recommendations of what we thought that Salem estimate would be originally, which was showing 2007 data of about 3.3 billion at that case, when we looked at what that data was. So what we tried to do then, is after we got the data from the DOR, is that allowed us to go ahead and hone in on what we believe the Salem-specific data is. So the second chart that you saw today, those percentages we looked at at the point 2 and the point 2.5 is those ranges that we're looking at. And so we have some tables in there, just some sample wage data. If it's $10,000 in payroll, that would be an annual tax of about $20 for an employee.
I do remember seeing those now, so I'm sure closer inspection, when I haven't spent all day working on some other revenue producing stuff for the government, yeah, yeah, might help me.
Sure, and we love our numbers, so we're always happy to point them out.
I only scanned, I did not peruse. The counselors know that story.
Sure.
Page 48, I think you'll find those sample, the sample data. Other questions on this option? Okay, I think we're ready to move on to the next one.
You almost finished that whole thing.
And I don't know the lineup here. Kelly?
Two leaders today.
Great.
I'm just saying.
Try six. That'll be good.
So I am tasked this evening with providing a little context in regard to that eight million dollar amount that you've been hearing about this evening. So the initial discussions with the task force explored a range of 6 to 8 million dollars. The amount of 8 million is based on assumptions of the current service level forecast published in December of 2018. And it also includes the assumption of a positive forecast variability, which means 1% more savings than we've anticipated in that forecast, and 1% more revenue from all sources within the general fund. So that's a very positive sort of perspective in regard to the forecast. The forecast includes dozens of revenue and expenditure assumptions and variables. Expenditure assumptions are influenced by the composition of our workforce, perse assignment, benefit selections, and the result of labor contract negotiations. While our forecasting is very granular and very robust, it is impossible to know the exact outcome of all forecast revenue and expenditure variables across a five-year period. As previously noted this evening, the problem we are solving for in the general fund is a structural imbalance, where the growth in the cost of services is outpacing the growth of current revenues. The forecast currently does not provide for any growth in the service delivery structure to better address existing or future demand. If the resources generated by future growth and demand, property taxes, user fees, consumption taxes, are insufficient to fund the corresponding demand for service, this also applies pressure on that structural imbalance. A new revenue source or sources would need to keep pace with the growth in the cost of services for it to provide effective relief in the general fund. So what that means is we'd need a dynamic source of revenue so that it could keep pace with the changing needs of the general fund and the changing cost of services. So any questions?
I guess I'll go first.
Sure.
Did the task force consider a combination of those two options? Did they look at, say, cutting each one of those in half, perhaps?
You know, I think, that's a great question, and there was certainly some conversation about that. And I think really the task force could have, you know, sort of exploded their view and tried to solve for lots of problems, but they were very focused in terms of trying to find sources that could potentially close that gap. And certainly, I think it's an option of council to look at those two sources and see if they both can be, if you would choose to apply them both, and at what level you would apply them.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, Kelly, sorry. It says in the staff report that the financial forecast for the Transportation System Fund demonstrates that we're starting to get into the leftover working capital.
Yes.
What is that amount?
In the transportation fund? Hang on just one second. I happen to have my forecast with me. So based on the forecast, it looks like use of working capital, well, the forecast indicates ending working capital at the end of the upcoming fiscal year, so fiscal year 2020 would be 1.9 million. The next year, it actually grows a bit, and then the following year, which would be fiscal year 2022, it takes about a half-million-dollar hit.
You're talking about the transportation fund?
I am talking about the, not the general fund. No, the numbers are larger in the general fund.
So even though theoretically a gas tax can only be used on certain things, it could be used on things that we are supplementing our general fund with now?
The gas tax can only be used for transportation-focused uses, and there's no, there's no subsidization between the general fund and the Transportation Services Fund. The general fund is not providing any financial support to the Transportation Services Fund at this time.
Right. Okay, let me try to put it different. If we did a gas tax, it would pay for certain things that, some of which we're paying for now out of the general fund?
Yes.
So it would support?
Well, no, no, wait. I'm sorry. A gas tax would pay for things? No. A gas tax would pay for things? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding your question.
If we are supplementing the transportation fund as a practical matter with general fund?
We are not.
Okay.
We are not.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. So let me come at this from the other side of this. Let's say both the recommendations are implemented, and they both can bring anywhere from $2 million to $16 million, as I see the way things are worked out here. So how much of a difference does that actually make in our calculations that in a couple years, we're going to be facing the cliff?
Well, $2 million to $6 million of difference. I mean, $2 million would be insufficient to address the problem that we're facing in the general fund. $16 million, at this point, would be more, in that five-year look, $16 million on an annual basis would be quite a bit more than what we would need. So it's somewhere in the middle.
Okay, okay. So I'm back to the Thelma and Louise. How do we keep Thelma and Louise driving parallel to the cliff, not over the cliff? That's my question. Yeah.
Actually, what we're needing to do is to have our resources, or our revenues, I beg your pardon, on an annual basis be equivalent to our expenditures, or in the reverse, our expenditures to be equivalent to our revenues. That's really what we're looking at.
I think Council President Hoy said $8 million. So is that kind of a target figure that you're hoping to raise?
Well, that, as I explained just a moment ago, that is the amount that we discussed with the task force, but what I'm saying to you now, very emphatically, is there are hundreds of variables, and so that amount can change.
So with the gas tax, what I find interesting is the specific use of it with sidewalks in regards to the transportation system and sustainability. It seems more tied to growth and usage in the area, since it would be people buying the gas here in town, and because there is such an identified concern about those issues here. So as Counselor Lewis had asked, if we're, and you had said we're not using funds from the generals for some of those issues, but this would be a sustainable way to be able to still provide those services and meet that community need, is what I'm hearing you say? More sustainable.
If, you know, if we were to talk about the gas tax, which we can certainly do this evening, I mean, we have staff presentation prepared for that as well, yes, the gas tax would be focused specifically on transportation services and the maintenance and operation of the street system and sidewalk system.
Okay.
Okay.
So I think this would be a good time for us to have that presentation, since it looks like we're going to head that way anyway, so why don't we get the presentation out there, and then we can just consider all of the options?
Sounds great, and I could read some wonderful speaking points about Ryan Zink, but I'll just turn the podium over to him. Ryan Zink will be doing the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for the introduction. We'll just move right into this, so good evening, Mayor Bennett, who is not here anymore. And members of council, members of our Revenue Task Force, thank you for being here this evening. My name is Ryan Zink, as you all have heard, I'm one of the city's analysts in the Budget Office, and so this evening I am presenting information on our local gas tax, which is, as you've heard, one of the options that is a recommendation from the Revenue Task Force. Interesting bit of trivia, the nation's first tax on gasoline was actually implemented right here in Oregon 100 years ago, in 1919. At that time, the tax was one cent per gallon. Today, that tax is now 34 cents per gallon, and is paid by either fuel distributors or retail gas stations, depending on the type of gas that's being imported or distributed. See if I do this right. Hey, hey, all right, I'm a quick learner. So a gas tax is a familiar concept to most Oregonians. In addition to a state tax, 27 cities and two counties have a local gas tax ranging from one cent to 10 cents per gallon, with the most common rate being about three cents. Local gas tax is a significant revenue source that some cities use to maintain and improve their transportation network. Portland has a temporary local gas tax, which at 10 cents is currently the highest rate in the state, and generates over, generated over $20.8 million in fiscal year 2018. Portland's gas tax sunsets in December of 2020, however, it was announced last month that they will be referring it back to voters again in May of 2020. Eugene is often compared with Salem, as it is similar in size and population. Eugene maintains 538 miles of streets, while Salem maintains 640 miles. And from 2005 through 2016, Eugene had the highest local gas tax rate in the state at five cents per gallon, and collects approximately $3 million in revenue from this source each year. The revenue estimated estimates displayed here for our local gas tax in Salem range from $2.4 million a year at 3 cents per gallon to $4.8 million a year at 6 cents per gallon. Revenue Task Force recommendation is 6 cents. Since fuel sales data for Salem is unavailable, these revenue estimates are based on wholesale distribution data that was provided by the Oregon Department of Transportation. Those revenue estimates, however, were discounted by 20% to account for gas stations that have Salem addresses but may be located outside of city limits. So just trying to hone in on what that true estimate may be. These estimates are based on a flat rate, but could be structured to escalate over time. As many of you know, the available funding used to maintain and improve the city's transportation system has been insufficient to meet the growing need. For example, prior to the approval of the 2008 Streets and Bridges General Obligation Bond, the projects identified totaled over $300 million. However, the bond only funded about 1/3 or 100 million dollars of those projects. For the past three years, the city has conducted a statistically valid residential satisfaction survey. In 2018, 14% of respondents indicated the most important issue for the city to address was related to transportation, more specifically, street and infrastructure maintenance, an additional bridge, and alleviating traffic congestion. Not only was this category identified as the second-highest issue for the city to address, but it was also listed second for the service that needed the most improvement. A significant additional revenue source, such as a local gas tax, would provide additional funding to help meet the community's expectations as related in the survey. The Oregon Constitution mandates that revenue derived from taxes on motor vehicle use and fuel be used for construction, improvement, repair, maintenance, and operation of public highways, roads, and streets, including facilities for pedestrians and bicycles that are located within the right-of-way. As mentioned earlier, the city does not have adequate funding to provide many essential transportation activities. Additional revenue from a local gas tax could be used to fund enhanced pavement, sidewalk, or bridge maintenance, or to offset the cost of signal traffic operations. Moving to a more sustainable model of using pay-as-you-go funds in combination with general obligation bonds to accomplish major transportation infrastructure projects would be a positive outcome of implementing a local gas tax. Since 2009, all local gas tax measures must be approved by voters. Depending on when city council takes action and which election cycle is targeted for a measure of this nature, it could take two years or more before the city would begin receiving revenue from a gas tax. If passed by voters, implementation could occur in a relatively short timeframe without any additional staff. The Oregon Department of Transportation currently administers and collects the local gas tax on behalf of 19 municipalities for an affordable administration fee with minimal startup costs. And I'm available for any questions.
Are there any other cities in Marion County or Polk County that have the local gas tax?
I believe so, but I'd have to go look at the list. I apologize, I don't have that right in front of me, but I can have it on the computer.
That'd be great. Counselor Anderson?
Yeah, let me be more specific. I see that Eugene has 5 cents, and Springfield next door has 3 cents. But if we put a tax in, and Kaiser doesn't, I mean, I'm telling you, I used to commute from Eugene to Salem back and forth, and we always tried to buy our gas in Salem because it was cheaper, and, you know, we live in a society where people drive across town to save 2 cents a gallon, and they spend more than they actually are saving, but that's perception is reality. So what if we do it and Kaiser doesn't have one?
So I can address that, and I apologize, I'm not the expert on this. Callie Leinenbach, who did the initial research, is actually out of town at a conference, so I'm her stand-in, so I'm a poor substitution, but she did some research on that, and one thing that she found, looking at that exact scenario of cities that either, whether it's one city with a tax or multiple cities with a tax and one without, is that really the average gas price amongst all those cities, you didn't see what you would expect in terms of a higher...
Because the gas stations in Kaiser are going to say, well, we'll price it at there, and we get the profit to us, yeah.
Yeah.
One interesting scenario, she actually found that the lowest gas price in an area was actually in a city that had the gas tax. I think that was in the Lane County Eugene-Springfield, I think within Cottage Grove area.
Just one more question, and I've got some pressing business to leave, but I thought I heard earlier that the task force is not recommending this. Oh, okay, I knew somebody was not recommending it. And so maybe the city manager could just give us a short synopsis of why he doesn't recommend it, or the staff doesn't recommend it.
My recommendation is not at this time, and very simply is my belief that the focus needs to be on the general fund. And for the reasons outlined by Ryan, while there are needs in the Transportation Fund, needs that are growing, our immediate need is the general fund.
Counselor Naki.
If I may, in that same venue, if, say, counselor were to implement service fee without going to the voters, what would the likelihood be that we'd actually be able to pass a gas tax on those same people? So as far as timing, I would agree with the city manager.
So to an earlier question, Silverton, Woodburn, and Stateon also have a gas tax.
And what is the amount?
Likely 3 cents, that was the most common one. Silverton is 2 cents. Woodburn is a penny. And then we had Stateon. 3 cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments regarding the gas tax?
All right, thank you.
All right. So one item that we skipped over was continued discussion on the general fund. I don't know if there's anything else that we want to talk about. Kelly, is there any other comments you wanted to make?
Question, comment, Counselor?
Yes.
I'm just curious, because if we've been looking at the timeframes of all of these things, and one of the reasons, well, the reason that the city manager just gave us for not going forward or not considering further the gas tax is that it's not the right time. And if we look at the timeframe proposed here for implementation, you're talking about two years to get it up and running. If you don't start now, then it'll be another two years or four years or something. So when is the right time to start these things? In relationship to the other measures that we're interested in looking at, they have a shorter timeframe of implementation, because council could, in fact, just pass those right off the bat, so to speak. And then it's just a question of setting the mechanics to get it all up and running. This one requires voter approval, so what I guess I'm trying to get at is if you start now, you may get something through in the next two years or three years or four years, but if you don't start at all, you won't. Period.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Yes, Counselor Lewis?
Well, when it comes to transportation, the 2008 bond measure passed at a time where nobody predicted it would, and it passed because it was crystal clear what the voters would be getting for their investment. And I guess as a comment, if we were to go after a gas tax, I think we should follow that same route and talk about exactly specifically what the money would be spent for. That is the best way, I think, to get something like this passed.
Counselor Naki.
Thank you. Yeah, likewise, we're going to be having to go out for another streets bond measure relatively soon, and until we get that strategy put in place, if we were to, again, push this out and then have to follow it up almost immediately with another bond measure, folks may be a little less likely to support back-to-back transportation pieces versus general fund again, which is where we have our most significant concern, and the bond measure could go forth as well, and then somewhere down the line, if we're still inclined to look at gas tax, that would probably be the best time in between transportation bond measures.
Other questions or comments regarding the general fund? So we're at the moving forward portion of the agenda, so I don't know if we want to, it almost seems like we ought to consider public comment first, but I don't know if we can do that. Nobody signed up, so we've considered it. But I did want to give members of the task force who have not had an opportunity to speak tonight, I want to make sure that everybody has a chance to address the group. Is there anybody on the task force who did not get a chance to speak, to say their piece? Nope? Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I'd like to ask the members of the task force, kind of a procedural question, and I'm not looking at anybody in particular, but I'm curious about the participation of the task force, how you felt about the engagement, how you feel about the recommendations that you brought forward.
Well, I'll start and give everyone a chance. I really thought it was a good process. We started with a survey, and we, you know, it wasn't a raise-your-hand-in-public kind of survey. We had time to look and consider the options and rank them, and use that to really guide our first discussion. I missed one of the work sessions, so I couldn't speak for those who were at all of them, but I thought it was well done. The staff put together terrific information to look at and review, and we had really open, frank dialogue. We were, as you saw, we were not all in agreement on everything, so I thought it was a very fair process.
If I may? Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Lewis, for the question. One of the things, well, there are a few things about the task force that really impressed me. Number one was the age range of the members of the task force. We had certainly, I might be wrong, but, you know, mid-20s to, you know, gray, gray hair, and, you know, grandparents. So I thought it was a really good age representation. Additionally, they were very well-attended meetings, very well-attended meetings, and there were additional meetings because of some of the information that we had requested from staff, and we got long and drawn out sometimes. And at the very last, the last official meeting before staff was going to put together the recommendations, they asked the task force, who, you know, one or two people, we just need you to serve on this last piece. Every one of us wanted to serve on that last piece. So I think there was definite engagement, regardless of the outcome or maybe how we saw things differently. I thought the engagement was excellent.
If I could just add to that, I think we had, I think everybody participated, and I think we had some really good discussions. Now, I started not really being 100% sure what was all going on, because, you know, you just introduced this, but it didn't take long to figure out where the city was, the presentations were really well-done. So, yeah, I actually ended up enjoying doing the work.
Rather than speak to the process, which I think was a good one, I think the only comment I may make, and that's for the council, that I think you know it, this is going to be a lift, you know, taking this out to the public and getting this passed. And alluding back to Counselor Lewis's comment earlier about the transportation bond, voters are, I think, are willing generally to support, much more likely to support, when they know what they're getting for their dollars. And I think what we're talking about here is going to take a real effort on the part of the city to educate the voters and the public about the city's budget problem and the shortfall that you're looking at in the years to come. But more so than that, perhaps looking at, what are the alternatives to this? If this revenue doesn't come through, what does that mean to the public? What services would be cut and at what levels? Because I think the voters and the public are going to need to understand what this means. You know, it doesn't necessarily mean they're getting anything more, they're not hiring more police officers necessarily, you're not opening an additional library somewhere, but they need to understand, I think, that the council has considered what the cuts would be, and this is what they would look like without this revenue.
Thank you for that. I appreciate those comments, I think that's really spot-on. Any other comments from the members of the task force before the council decides where to go from here?
Well, I would just agree with everything that everybody has already said, and particularly with what Mike has said regarding making it very clear what the money would go for and what the actual impacts to individuals will be, because, let's see, it's 20-some years I've been hanging around the city doing this kind of work, and every year it's been, we don't have enough money to do what we want to do. Every year, every budget session, and every budget session, we somehow manage to cut, we cut people, we cut services, we dig into our rainy day fund if we've got one, we do all kinds of things, and we somehow muddle through, and that's what this... And that's what this public out there will expect us to do. If we just say, "Give us the money," they will expect us to just muddle through. They'll say, "Well, why should we give you any more money when we know that you've muddled through in the past?" So the, I think it was maybe Raquel said at one of our meetings, that public education is going to be a very big factor in this kind of a campaign. But the process that we did, well, to get to this point, was very, very, very good. The staff presentations were phenomenal, much kudos to staff, they were really excellent. And I think the discussions were really worthwhile.
Thank you. Council Kaiser?
Thanks. I'm just curious, before we conclude, the, there's two other options that the task force considered that scored high of fifteen or above that weren't considered, and I'm just curious if somebody could speak to maybe why there was the payment in lieu of taxes and the construction excise tax, and I guess why they scored high but they weren't recommended ultimately? I'm just looking at the matrix on page fifty-nine.
Who would be best to speak to that?
Because they were, you know, the gas tax, the score on there was, it was ranked five with a score of fourteen, and then there were two that ranked actually above that. One of them was actually ranked two, had the second highest score, but wasn't considered. So I'm just, I'm just trying to understand why those weren't considered.
I'm probably not the best, I think Kelly could do much better, but I will, I'll just tell you what I, what I recall was the construction excise tax, for example, was considered not enough, not sufficient to meet the needs of the general fund. It would have been outsized tax to get the amount of revenue that would be needed and wouldn't have been viable at that level. So it would have had to been combined with several other options to get what we would need. As far as the other option, I think the, in lieu of, it's a voluntary thing on the state to do that sort of thing, so it would be a persuasion campaign, not something we could mandate, as I recall. I mean, the city attorney could tell a better story about that, but I think that was what it was, it was, it would be great. I mean, we could also talk to the state, you know, it would be really great if you chipped in here, but counting on that to fill a budget shortfall would be risky at best.
Can I make another comment?
I think Council Kaiser has a follow-up.
So I was just gonna say, so as far as the payment in lieu of taxes, it's political, yeah. The construction excise tax, though, it sounds like it was mostly not considered just due to, it wouldn't raise as much as the eight million-ish dollars that we're looking for. But it doesn't necessarily mean that it wouldn't raise revenue either.
Right.
It could have raised the eight million, but it would have been such a high fee that it would have...
So are these recommendations, then I guess that brings up another question in my mind, are, were these recommendations recommended solely for being able to raise that eight million dollars? Was that like one of the criteria? Okay.
If I might, thank you. I think the sense of the task force was that this is a public sale. You've got, we've got an issue, and in order to fill that gap, we have got to educate the community on it. And to have ten small things, or four or five small things that would feed into that one number, would be more difficult. You know, you're diluting your message as to what you want from the public. And regardless of whether or not you go out to a vote for this, for whatever it is that you decide to do, you still are gonna have to educate the community. And we just, if I'm not mistaken, that was the consensus of the committee, was to go for a number that would fill the gap.
As a follow-up then, so then is the assumption correct that these recommendations should be taken as a package? Then, that we, if we're gonna do, that we need to do all of them in order to meet that? Or are you saying?
One or the other.
One of, one, one would suffice?
Except for the gas tax.
Okay. Thanks.
And the, so the construction excise tax, as well as the other two are council approval options, so one consideration would be if we choose not, if we choose to implement it, we could do a more diverse grouping, because the education is harder, but at the same time, you're approving it internally, so it doesn't make as much sense going out. So I think when we all agreed that we wanted to go out to the public, things that, making it simple, made a lot more sense.
So if I could ask a clarifying question on that, so you're suggesting that no matter which one of these we do, we should send it out for a public vote?
That was the recommendation of the task force.
Thank you. Member Quillanin?
Yes, with the exception of me.
It was not unanimous, no. It was the recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, it was the recommendation. But what I wanted to comment on, in, kind of in response to Kara Kaiser's question about were there other ones of these that we considered for possibly different reasons, the business license fee, we know that it would not raise a lot of money. However, it had ancillary benefits to it, which is creating a registry of businesses, and then Council Rasek was very clear that that would be quite helpful, and the city was also very clear, staff was clear, that it would be very helpful to know exactly how many businesses we actually have, and if we were trying to implement, say, an employee payroll tax, it would be helpful to know who's here. So that was another one that was, we didn't recommend it going forward, but it has other benefits than just collecting money.
And that's kind of where the discussion was, is it's less of a revenue thing and more of an efficiency thing. The city could function better with that information, but the amount of revenue, because we were considering it a tiny fee, the amount of revenue would be, would not, yeah, it wouldn't even factor in, that it would be in the margin of error for any of these other options, so.
Any other questions or comments? So I think our task now as a council is to decide whether we want to send any or all of these things to the full council. So we're not gonna, obviously not making any final decisions tonight, but we're deciding what to send to the council for full consideration.
And if there are any questions, you would like any additional pieces of information, any additional analysis that you would like to help when you are considering a more final vote, a final decision on a revenue option or options?
Thank you. So I did register the one question that I definitely think needs some exploration before we can fully know whether that's a viable option or not. Council Lewis?
Two things. One, I think all of these are, at least pique my interest enough to say to pass all three of them on to the council to chew on. I think I'll stop there.
All right, thank you. No, we're just, we're, I think we're just talking right now, I don't think we're at the point of it. Would we need a formal motion and vote for this, or what's the process?
I think it would be helpful for staff if you were to have a vote of council to forward which recommendations or all of them to council for consideration.
So in terms of order, do I need to have a motion on the floor now before we do this discussion? Or are we good to just keep the conversation going?
It's at your pleasure. Usually you do a motion first and then consider the motion through discussion.
Council Nanki?
Yeah, I would move that we recommend to the city council to pursue a city operating fee and not pursue a payroll tax or a gas tax at this time.
It's been moved by Council Anderson, or Council Nanki, excuse me, to move the operating fee forward. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Kaiser. Discussion?
If I may quickly, there was a lot of, no matter which way we go on this, and if we do, in fact, push one of these out to the voters or elect to do it ourselves, based on the operating fee, we had a good cross-section of our community on that task force, and it was unanimous to move forward with that one, knowing that the payroll tax, it was a, not necessarily, and depending on how we made up the task force, that could have went the other way as well. If we're really gonna need the entire community to push whatever out through, and if we lose half the community, I don't see that as viable at this point in time, and again, with gas tax, depending on which one we do with that, our need is in the general fund right now. And we'll be going out soon with another transportation bond, and to have the gas tax right in front of that, knowing that there's significant transportation needs in the community, I think it would be detrimental to a bond passage in the short term.
Thank you. Comments or, yes, Council Kaiser?
Yeah, a comment for the operating fee, I guess to register a question, is one I brought up earlier, which is, does that fee need to be a fixed dollar amount, can it be a percentage of something? I think it would be interesting just to see the math there, and it's a different way of kind of looking at it. Second of all, I think the payroll tax, I think there's some mechanical logistical concerns that I think have already been expressed. If it came to council, I would be okay with that. At the same time, I don't want staff to invest a lot of time when that might not be a viable option for the council to consider, so, or for the public. So I'm not, yeah, that one I'm a bit more meh on, I guess.
Council Lewis?
Well, I won't vote for the motion mostly because I am intrigued about the idea of having state employees who do utilize services not paying for it. And if it could be done, and that's the question for me, I have doubts too, but if that could be done, that rises to the top for me of the three, and when I came in, it was at the very bottom.
I get, thank you. I guess I have a similar way of thinking. I'm thinking, why not send both of them forward? We can do some more work, staff can do some more exploration, and then ultimately, the council can decide whether one is viable and the other is not. But if we don't send it forward tonight, I think we've foreclosed on our options, so that was, that's my only thought, but, and I really like the idea of spreading out, it's almost like a, like you can think of a sales tax, where folks who are using the services are paying for them, so to speak, the people who are in the city earning money, using some of our resources, who don't live here, would help contribute under that scenario, and I think there's something to be said for that. Council Rasek?
And I'll just add that I agree, I think sending both forward makes sense. The staff work, the questions, some of the major questions we had tonight were with how we would work with Department of Revenue on both of those, and so I think having those discussions before our next meeting so that we have the full information as to, you know, how we would work with those and get all those questions answered, I think it makes a lot of sense if we came back to it, because I don't know that council couldn't bring it back if we decided to later, it would sort of duplicate effort, have to go back to revenue and ask them again about the other tax that we, you know, had discussed. So I'm in favor of at least exploring both to that level.
Are we ready to vote on the motion before us, or is there more conversation?
It's singular right now.
Correct. Correct. The motion, as I understand it, is that we would recommend the operating fee to the city council and nothing else. That's the motion on the table. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
Looks like that one fails two to... It's this side against that side. I don't know if this is east or west, or north or south, but this side, yeah. So, I would entertain another motion?
I'll move.
Brad says no more motions. So I guess we're done.
Oh, well, that's easy. I don't know, Jim, did you want to make your motion again?
Yeah, I'll throw it out there until it dies. But I move that we move all three recommendations forward.
And I'll second.
It's been moved by Council Lewis, seconded by Council Rasek, that we move all three recommendations forward. Discussion?
If I could, this doesn't really guarantee anything, it just, it allows the next step to you, all three of these things. There's no requirement that we will do any, there's the need, but I'm inclined at this point to keep the options open, even though it might clearly be that one or two of these ideas after further vetting are just not workable. But I'm not there yet, so I, that's why I moved to have all three go forward.
I agree with Council Lewis, and also just knowing, looking at our numbers, there are six of nine of us here, I do think it would be a good opportunity for the other three folks who aren't able to be here right now to be able to consider all of the options on the table. Perhaps there's a majority somewhere in there once all nine of us are present, and if we don't send them forward, then we have foreclosed on that option for those three who aren't here. Other comments? Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor of moving all three forward, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to one. I believe we are done for the evening. Check this out.
There was no public comment.